Would please to silence your cell phones where we don't have any interruption. And while you're doing that, I'm gonna ask Ms. Comer if she'll give us indication. Scott Tipton will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
You all belly pads with me? Dear Lord, thank you for giving us the privilege of waking this morning and serving you this evening and all day long. I ask that you will be with us this evening and guide us and direct us in our thoughts and in our decisions. Thank you for the privilege of serving you and serving the city. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. As a point of order, I want to recognize Councilman Burrows who is joining us by telephone this evening. Does any member of the council or administration have an amendment to the agenda?
I do.
All right.
I'd like to pull seven off of the consent agenda, please.
Okay.
If you'd like to put under minds, make it nine D.
Okay.
All right. Let's go with nine D. All right, anybody got any more? Frank?
No, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone here to address council tonight that's not already on the agenda? Okay. We're gonna go to community recognition tonight. Is there any members of the mayor's youth council present tonight? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Business Spotlight tonight, the Business Spotlight will highlight the Gulf Coast Heart Institute and the upcoming heartwalk. So I want you guys to watch a video that they prepared for us.
February is Heart Month, so tonight we are featuring a very respected cardiologist, Dr. Sati Adlaka and his practice, the Gulf Coast Heart Institute located here in Pascagoula near Singing River Hospital. We visited with Dr. Adlaka and his staff to talk about the importance of good heart health and how we can all get ready for the upcoming heartwalk at Beach Park on March 30th.
Hi, this is Dr. Adlaka here. I'm at Gulf Coast Heart Institute where I practice cardiology. Just wanted to talk a little bit first about exercising and how good it is for you. You know, the heartwalk is a great activity that we do here in the community to get individuals to be, you know, heart healthy and it is well-known to keep people alive longer, reduce your risk of heart attack, reduce your risk of stroke, and so just kind of promoting that. You know, it's really important to have good heart health and some of the things that we do to try to protect the heart throughout our lives are make sure that we have good blood pressure, take care of our cholesterol, don't smoke, eat right. If you have diabetes, really pay attention to, you know, controlling your sugars and having great control. And so those are some of the things we can do to help protect our heart. Now, individuals who have risk factors such as high blood pressure, diabetes, before you go out there and really start hitting the pavement pretty hard, may want to get your heart checked out by a cardiologist first with possibly a simple stress test and maybe an ultrasound to make sure your heart muscle's strong. And if everything looks good, you know, go out there and exercise and, you know, take care of yourself. And, you know, walking is one of the easiest exercises to do. All you need is a pair of shorts, a tee shirt, and some good running shoes and, you know, it's a lifelong habit that can definitely improve your quality of life and make you live longer. I look forward to seeing you all here for the heartwalk on March 30th here in Pascagoula.
Visit our website and click on the heartwalk flyer to join our team or create one of your own. We hope to see you on March 30th.
So we appreciate those guys coming in for the Business Spotlight. Obviously, I have not had to see Dr. Adlaka, but if I do have to, I'll go see him. He's a good guy and a great physician. And we teamed up with him here with the Singing River Health Center and the Heart Association to once again host the annual Jackson County Heart Walk here in Pascagoula. So Saturday, March 30th, we'll be doing that and really want to encourage everybody to join our team or create one of your own. You can create your own team, too. You can check it out on the website at cityofpascagoula.com and just click on the flyer that's on there. He's a, I think this is a very worthwhile call, so I encourage everybody to participate. Okay, we have a proclamation for the National Heart Month and we'd ask that those who are here for that to come up. Councilman Tipton is going to read the proclamation.
Whereas cardiovascular diseases are the number one killer of women in the U.S., whereas cardiovascular disease kills one woman almost every 80 seconds in the U.S. and whereas about 80% of cardiovascular diseases may be prevented. And whereas risk factors for heart disease such as blood pressure, smoking, and cholesterol can be controlled, and whereas women are encouraged to commit to making physical activity and healthy eating a priority to improve heart health. Whereas the American Heart Association's Go Red For Women movement motivates women to learn their family history and to meet with a healthcare provider to determine their risk for cardiovascular diseases and stroke. Whereas Go Red For Women encourages women to take charge of their heart health by knowing their total cholesterol, HDL, blood pressure, blood sugar, and body mass index. Now therefore Mayor Dane Maxwell, in recognition of the importance of the ongoing fight against heart disease and stroke, do hereby proclaim the month of February to be National Heart Month in Pascagoula, Mississippi, and urge all citizens to show their support for women in the fight against heart disease by commemorating this day by wearing the color red. By increasing awareness, speaking out about heart disease, and empowering women to reduce their risk for cardiovascular diseases, we can save thousands of lives each year.
All right, great, thanks, Mr. Tipton. Is there a motion on the table to ratify the proclamation?
So move.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, the proclamation stands. Now we move to the council portion of the agenda. La Pointe Crabs Foundation referenced kids field trip. Ms. Ford, you guys want to come up?
This is Alice Baker.
Who's that?
Alice Baker.
No, I know, I'm just kidding.
The judge of the Crabs, another of our, oh.
I do, I know. Go ahead, I'm just kidding.
Judge Crabs just walked in, too, who's also one of the.
Judge, good to see you.
Five minutes, okay. Thank you for your, oh, this is Max.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Thank you for your time and your continued support of the La Pointe Crabs Restoration Project. Our purpose here today is to give a brief update on what is going on. As you may or may not be aware, the bid for the final phases of the project have come in higher than anticipated. The foundation is seeking every available source of funding. We have grant applications out and we're trying to work with our local legislators for bond money, Restore Mississippi money, or BP funding. Any assistance that you can lend in this endeavor is appreciated more than you will ever know. We're somewhat stymied in that we cannot apply for the real big money from the Tidlins funds because they're reimbursable grants and we do not have the funds to pay for the projects upfront. We have now established the paperwork and are ready to accept donations for our endowment fund, so maybe in our lifetime we will have enough money to front projects. The fence replacement covered by a Tidlins grant is almost complete. Weather permitting, by the end of the month, you'll no longer feel that you're entering prison grounds when you come through the old courthouse gates that have been beautifully restored. So please come by and see it at your convenience. Except for makeup days, we have completed our third year of field trips. Every fourth grade class in the Pascagoula, Goché, Moss Point, and Resurrection School systems have participated in a full morning of activities, learning their local history and gaining a new appreciation of the treasure we have in the La Pointe Crabs house. The program is directed by retired teachers. Each docent receives training before they are assigned a station. This is purely a volunteer endeavor and as our numbers increase, we hope to include all fourth grade students in the county in the program. And who knows, one day we may be able to have summer programs. For your information, the fourth grade is introduced to Mississippi history and as you are aware, the history books omit a lot of local history and information. The AP eighth grade students who also review Mississippi history visit in the spring of each year for a somewhat different field day. We would now like to show you a very brief video highlighting the field trips. It was shown to the board of supervisors this morning, to you all tonight, and then it will be released to the public for fundraising activities.
Go!
I got it!
Go Mississippi, keep rolling along. Go Mississippi, we're singing your song.
All righty, y'all ready to take a little walk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's go.
Field trips are incredible and I feel they're a valuable resource to make sure that, like, you know, the students are able to make the connection between what they read inside the classroom.
The house is old, 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 over 261 years old. Does that make it special? It has history, that's why it's so special.
When they're able to get out into the earth and see those things and experience those things and have tangible experiences, that's what's important and that's, you can't do that unless you have a field trip.
We can touch right here. How do we know that's British? What is that right there?
It's a crayon.
What is crayon? Why is there a crayon on here?
Because it was a king.
And who was that king?
George.
And when they come here, it is very hands-on and when they're hands-on learning, it is better for them to retain the information.
There you go.
That was fantastic.
Wonderful.
We took their curriculum and we matched it to the zones that we see here in the museum. So we looked for vocabulary words, we looked for questions, we gave them resources. Well, boys and girls, this is one of your academic vocabulary words. This is a real artifact. These were artifacts that were found right here on this property and around it. We wanted this program to be where the teachers wanted when we said we want to do a field trip to the La Pointe Crabs House and Museum, we wanted them to say yes.
What else are some things that we find around here?
Oysters.
Oysters, how did they use oysters?
Burned them.
Well, first, the first thing they did with them?
They ate them.
Right, and then they did what?
Burned them.
Each center is based on a previous center before. We ask them when they rotate centers. We say recall, which is a depth of knowledge, and we say, do you remember when you were in the museum? You saw this. And so each, each one of our docents are trained to ask those questions.
Kylie, tell me a building material that's used down here in that house over there. Tabby.
That when it is mixed with water and other materials, it makes tabby concrete.
And what's the other word? Busin.
I know, brucelage.
Brucelage, okay, very good.
Their eyes just light up when they hear about Indian lore and the legend of the Singing River and the Pascagoula Indians. We wanted to develop something that would be of interest to children and hopefully encourage parents to come and see the museum, teach them about different aspects of history that comes with the grounds.
Are you having a good time?
Yes.
Is this a good field trip?
Yes.
Good, I'm so glad. Y'all have been wonderful.
It doesn't run on its own. We do need funds. We need funds to keep the program going, to keep this main museum going so that it will be here for a long time.
It was a great video.
It was totally unrehearsed, the video.
It was great.
Guy was there that day, the day, I think it was the Cherokee kids were there.
And Lake, yeah.
Cherokee and Lake. And he took them totally unrehearsed and it turned out, we thought, great, but that is the enthusiasm we get every Wednesday. And starting next August, I welcome all of you all to come, any Wednesday you would like, from mid-August until mid-November because that's when the program is carried out and it's fantastic and the docents we cannot say enough about. But thank you for your time, attention, and support, and if you've got any questions, we'll be glad to answer them or get answers for you.
Well, you know me, I'm a big supporter, so.
Yes, we do.
What I'd like to do, though, is if you could get with Frank, Alice, get with him and let's, you and I set up another meeting after around, let's set it tentatively for after the March, all the stuff between now and then, so maybe, maybe in the first, second week of March. Let's get caught up on that.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna be making some trips and, you know, I want to go back and hit those guys again. Plus, I'll be up at the Capitol, too, so.
Yes.
There's another opportunity that I just found out about, so.
Ooh, okay.
Yeah, I just found out, we got home this morning, so yeah, I want to catch back up because I need to get some of that new material and get it presented while I'm there, so. And you know I'm all in, so I'm sure the whole board, the whole council here is.
It's just such a wonderful treasure.
It is.
Unfortunately, it's not recognized as much as we would like for it to be. It is astounding the number of visitors that we have that are from out of state.
Yeah.
Particularly the snowbirds, and we are part of the Park Service Passport Program, so if they come by, they can get their passports stamped. And we do have people participating in that, but we always need more people.
Well, this is a lot better year than last year for us, so let's take it to the next level, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did enjoy the tour, too.
I did, I got the opportunity to chaperone my daughter's fourth grade.
Did you?
It was a great place, if you haven't been, you can go check it out.
I've been there a number of times, I love it. I think it's one of the greatest treasures we have in Mississippi and I.
Exactly.
I agree with you, it doesn't get recognized enough, but we're gonna push the buttons to make that happen.
But we are, yes, we are.
We're pushing it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Now, the Round Island Lighthouse Preservation Society.
And that's me again.
I'm not surprised about that.
No, it's coincidental, okay.
I'm not surprised at all.
And I've got a couple of words, a few words I have to say first to bring everybody up to speed. The week prior to September the 28th, 1998, we're talking about 20 years ago, a front page article in the Mississippi Press instigated by Councilwoman Sarah Boykin called the citizens interested in preserving the deteriorating, tilting Round Island Lighthouse to meet to discuss possible solutions. A standing room only crowd showed up at the council chambers for the meeting and many suggestions were made. However, Mother Nature had something else in mind and the night of September the 28th, Hurricane Georges hit the area. After hours of hurricane-force winds, the valued lighthouse could stand no more and toppled. The fledging committee went into action and made many trips to Round Island to salvage bricks, the Lanin Gallery, and other artifacts. The city was very fortunate in that the FEMA representative had an affinity for lighthouses and was fascinated by Round Island and its long history. He assisted in many ways and after a period of time, the lighthouse was righted and a case sign was built around it, hopefully to keep it upright. There was still a lot of work to be accomplished, but the committee never quit. Over the period of time, the numbers dwindled considerably, but that did not prevent us from peddling tee shirts, mugs, posters, et cetera, at every opportunity. Due to the diligence, hard work, and leadership of Betty Bensy, Director of Community Development, the stub of the lighthouse was never far from anyone's mind. After about five years, serious planning began to fully restore the lighthouse on site, and then we all know what happened on August the 29th, 2005. This time FEMA said it was a repetitive damage and they would not rebuild it in place. After a lot of negotiation by Betty Bensy and others, FEMA agreed they would assist in bringing the lighthouse ashore. The Mississippi Department of Archives and History was heavily involved in this decision when they allowed the grant money to be transferred from building, rebuilding on site to be, to rebuild it in the new location after barging it ashore and the structure to be able to retain its National Register status. Compton Engineering and Vori's Construction paid a major role in bargeing the lighthouse ashore and we're all able to enjoy it today as a landmark into the city. And I'm sorry, I didn't mention Jackie Turner, city engineer, played a large role in getting it ashore, too. More fundraising activities took place primarily under the auspices of the city and lots of bricks and stairs were sold. After completion of everything, it is with pleasure that we turn the balance of the account to the city, quoting the mission statement. To protect, restore, and preserve the 1859 Round Island Lighthouse located in Pascagoula, Mississippi by working tirelessly to provide funding and support to safeguard the lighthouse cultural heritage for future generations. It is with the understanding that these funds in the amount of $11,933.36 are placed at trust for the upkeep, with the city for the upkeep of the lighthouse in order the light may shine for future generations.
Well, that's awesome.
You can get good shorts with your money, a lot of money.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. That's, oh.
I need almost $1,000.
That surprises me, I'm very, very honored to accept this on behalf and I can promise you, we'll, we'll take care of spending this wisely. And it'll be on lighthouse, and we were just talking about doing some lights there, covers and stuff for the various seasons that we have and then the events that we have, like Fourth of July and all, so thank you so much. I appreciate you so much. I'd like to get a picture if we could. I'm gonna put this check there and maybe if the council wants to come down, this is a shirt, it's truly an honor to accept this. So we'll, we'll come over here and we'll get the council with us and.
Okay, 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 okay.
We have a term to her.
We get our council members right back there, count on three, two, three, one, two, three.
Isn't it nice to come out with something?
It's nice to come out, it's like even if I had.
Hopefully.
Talk to him, brother.
Hopefully somebody will turn stuff like that over to the.
Yeah, I promise you, we're gonna do the right thing with this and make sure that it's spent on that lighthouse, it's a treasure in our community. Okay, next on the agenda, does anybody else have anything? We're good, so move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept it as amended?
So move.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, Mr. Quarter.
Mayor and council, before you on nine A, nomination by council for appointment to the library board, you had two applicants for this position, one was Laura Cooley, the one was Darlene Wickson. Process would be for someone to nominate and then the council to ratify.
Okay, anybody have a nomination?
I make a motion, we appoint Lauren Cooley to the library board to serve a term of five years.
Second.
Do you have any more nominations? Have a motion or a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to take a moment to thank Ms. Wickson for applying.
Yeah.
We're gonna find something for you to do.
Yeah, that's true, we will. Yes, okay, and you got Councilman Burrows, I heard on the phone.
Yes, he voted affirmative.
Okay.
The next item is nomination by council for appointment to the Pascagoula Goché School Board. You had seven applicants, Gary Blakeney, Mike Kincanon, Patricia Davis, Taylor McNeil, Joseph Powell, Alton Van, and Darlene Wickson. It's up to the council for the nomination.
Okay, do I have anybody with nominations? Slow, one at a time, let's see who's got what.
I make a motion, we appoint Taylor McNeil to the Pascagoula Goché District School Board to serve a term of five years.
Okay, any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Patricia Davis for the Pascagoula Goché School Board.
What's he saying?
He's not, that's just overflow.
Oh.
That's not, yeah.
He doesn't have a nomination?
Councilman Burrow, did you have a nomination?
No, I did not.
Okay, all right, any further nominations? Okay, since there are no further nominations, I want to thank everybody who, who signed up for this and we appreciate your interest in there. So we're gonna start with Taylor McNeil. Do I have a motion? I have a motion on a nomination from Comer, correct?
Yes.
And do I have a second on Taylor?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? How many ayes was that?
Just to clarify, Hobbs, one, two, three, four, and five, and Burrow.
Okay.
And Councilman Jones is in the name.
All right, so that's, say that again, how many?
Five to one.
Okay, so that, Mr. McNeil passes, he gets a majority of the vote, so Ms. Davis, where's Ms. Davis? Is she here?
No.
Okay, all right, Ms. Davis, we appreciate you wherever you are, if you're in Facebook world, thank you for submitting your application as well as the other nominations. Thank you so much for all that you did.
I would actually like to take a minute to thank Mike Kincanon.
Where's Mike?
He's right there.
Okay.
Nineteen years of service on the school board is phenomenal. That is a lifetime and that is something that is honorable, a gift of dedication and something that meant a whole lot to Mr. Kincanon for a lot of reasons. And I don't want that to go unrecognized. We appreciate it and I thank you and the city thanks you.
Okay, now we go to.
Just to reiterate, Mayor, notices will go out to Ms. Cooley and Mr. McNeil on their appointment, just so everyone's aware. Nine C is a discussion regarding dogs along the beach and in parks. At your table, at your desk, is the ordinance, Mississippi, I'm sorry, Pascua Ordinance, section 5863, that prohibits dogs in parks, beaches, and other public recreational areas except as those defined in that ordinance. This is, this has come to your attention because of some interest within the community and on the council about possibly expanding the allowable areas for dogs on leashes. This is up for discussion if the count, the staff would be willing to, of course, revise this ordinance and bring it back to you if that is your will, but there's been some requests to expand this, the allowable uses for dogs in parks, so if that's something the council wants to do, please advise us and we'll bring it back to you for your consideration.
Okay, so the question is, do we want to allow them in parks?
Yes, other than what's defined. Right now, as defined, is the north portion of IG Levee Park and at River Park, as well as along the beach between Pascagoula Street and Hague Street.
On a leash between.
On a leash. On a leash?
On a leash, yes.
Even if you have the no animal sign displayed, you still giving permission for them to bring dogs on? An example on poke avenue?
Yes, that is currently not allowed, it's currently not allowed to have dogs on that park.
That's what I'm saying, okay.
Now, I'mma just have to say how I feel straight up is, in Beach Park, I couldn't, I won't ever vote for any dogs in there, 'cause in cruising the coast and those events like that, I can imagine, and I've seen them in there and had to, had to ask them to leave, but you jump on a $150,000 car like, well, I don't have one of those, but I mean, like, my class of cars, not a hundred fifty thousand. I mean, it was made off a policeman's pay, but I, no, I, I just can't support that. Now, the point, I don't, I, I'm okay with the point simply because, you know, we have a cat colony down there, I mean, you know, it's, there's pets down there all the time and, oh, we've had our pictures taken, but there, and I get blasted on Facebook for that too.
I guess I was thinking more, I don't want them at the beach park because there are children there, I really wasn't thinking about the.
Yeah, well, that too.
Some children are afraid of dogs.
Well, and, and too, I don't want, like, if you go out, the, when you come out of Beach Park, right there, that's really the main access to the beach and I, I couldn't see dogs and all, because let me tell you what, we're gonna, wherever we go, where, I'm sure we're gonna work out putting up some doggy bags and stuff to pick up stuff, but the reality is, is, you know, that, that doesn't happen, 'cause we've got them out of other places at, at the River Park.
Now, does this pertain to the promenade right now? Are we allowed to walk dogs on a leash on the promenade?
Yes, but you can't have them on the beach, so that's, that's the issue, is that, you know, the staff has looked at this, I won't say considerably, but just enough time to kinda give it some, some look.
I want my dog on the beach and I hope I'm not.
Sure, well, that, you know, the truth is, there's some, there's some discussion about allowing it from, say, Oliver Street where the old sandbox was, to the new portion down on the point, to allow that stretch of the beach to be utilized, because most of the time, that, that area is not used for sunbathing or in the water access right there most time anyway, so there, there's less, less discussion, if you will, as far as cleanup issues and those kind of things. So, from the sandbox back at the point and include the point, to have them when they walk around the point and use that walking path, makes more sense from what I've been hearing from different individuals.
Okay, now what are you gonna do when we have movie night at the point?
It would, it would still apply, it depends on what y'all do with the ordinance. If y'all wanna restrict it to not having dogs on leashes at certain events, we can do that with the ordinance, of course, that makes it a little more cumbersome to enforce, but.
Nah, I don't think we'd ever wanna put dogs without leases.
No, 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 as far as, what she's meaning is, is by the event, so if you have movie nights at the point, or if you have a special event appointment, they can be excluded from the allowance for dogs during those times.
That's hard, that's hard.
It's hard to police that, yes.
So let me ask, I have a couple of questions. Can, are, maybe this is something for Chief to answer, can animal control officers give citations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I didn't know that, I didn't know the answer to that. What did you call, I call it Oliver Street, you called it something else?
Well, the old sandbox before the new beach was built, yeah.
Where's?
From the sandbox to the point, allow dogs, because I think at the pier where families are, you don't, you don't want animals there, because.
I don't see a lot of dogs on the beach anyway, I mean.
Yeah, and I agree, I think most of, what I see is that, basically from the point to Oliver, basically, you know, is you have a lot of dog walkers and, you know, dog owners as a whole are becoming a lot more responsible than they ever were before.
That's right.
They just need to be, and so I think, you know, we're putting the animal control officer in a bad situation, you know, if he catches somebody outside of Hague and they're out there walking their dog, then, you know, like you said, he doesn't wanna give a citation or doesn't even wanna do it, but, you know, but for me, the, the new sandbox, as Frank would call it, I mean, I don't see any issue with that, 'cause I rarely see any sunbathers out there. I see much more folks out there walking their dog than I do see sunbathers out there, so something like that, I think, would be, you know, good.
You good with that?
Yeah.
All right, everybody, you good, Rev?
So we'll drop to.
I've seen dogs out of IG Levy Park, in fact, a couple of weeks ago, a gentleman had his dog on a leash, but then he let him loose and they were throwing freebies and the dog running around chasing children, also here on Poke Avenue.
Now, I think on, at North IG Levy, I think that is permitted, but it would have to be the north part of the park.
There were neighbors over there on.
That's correct.
Poke Avenue, letting dogs loose on the track and they, they in the house, and they just running around.
Yeah, that's on, that's on.
Not permitted.
And they're leaving a mess behind.
Which, the South IG Levy or the North IG Levy is the one you're talking about where you saw the dogs playing?
Both.
Yeah, south, not so much, I couldn't see allowing, especially all the kids I see there, but north, I, I don't think that's a problem at all.
North is currently allowed in, in ordinance.
And I'm okay with Oliver, back to the point. What about Burrows?
Councilman Burrows, do you have input?
I'm sorry, I, I really don't at this point, I did not have a chance to look at the, the proposed ordinance, while I would like to, I don't have anything against it at the moment, I, I do think that we need to be prepared to step up enforcement for potential littering and certainly for dog owners who are not picking up after their dogs, and I think we'd have, need to have the means available.
I agree.
For them, be it gloves, be it, you know, other, something that, that would allow them to pick up the, the remains from animals that are on the beach, but, you know, I'm not, I certainly am not saying no at this point, I think it's something though to, to talk about further.
Okay, so what I had proposed before, I'll propose now, and that's talk to Main Street and see if they will pay for.
The next item under Jackie, actually, is gonna be addressing some of this, so.
Look at that, I'm ahead of you, see? Okay, well, so, would you guys go back and look at the ordinance, you see where the pulse of the council is on it, bring it back to us, let us look at it?
Will do.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, and then 9D was pulled up by Ms. Calmer, 7I, which was the Uniform Allowance Policy for Pasco Police Department.
I just think, when I read it, it is very contradictory, so my opinion is, the second paragraph, where it says sworn officers.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that needs to come out and be moved under eligibility.
Okay, we can do that.
And underneath eligibility, the paragraph that starts off as officers.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you need to define allowed purpose.
Okay, we can, we can do that.
Because if you don't define allowed purpose, if you don't clarify, you're gonna have a disagreement later on. It's better to clarify what it is that you're allowing.
Sure.
And you don't have a disagreement later. I would give, for instance, for instance, female officers require probably different things than male officers, and if you're approving something, you're gonna go, well, I'm not paying for that, well, she needs that.
Right.
So, you might wanna define in there, and I would punt that.
Yeah, Chief, if we could, let's get, if you would, let's get together tomorrow and let's clarify the allowed purposes and define them, but I would ask the council, just as a matter of practice, to pass this, because we have, we have officers actually waiting for these funds, we've been trying to get this policy put in place, previously we didn't have a policy and we haven't released these funds to help our officers because of that.
Okay.
So if we could, if you would agree to that, pending, with some clarification on that.
Well, let's get clarified, do the women get women shirts instead of men shirts and women pants instead of women?
Oh, I'm not talking about shirts.
I understand what you're talking about, I'm just asking a question.
And I'm not, I don't, I don't wanna not approve it, I wanna approve it, but I just think, we need to, y'all need to clarify what is approved and what's not approved.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Calmer, I shared your concern when I read the policy originally, City Manager and I talked in depth on it Friday, and I, I think his mindset was, we don't wanna make it so restrictive, that, you know, we may not think of everything or capture everything once we put it in policy.
And I agree with that, you can leave it loose, but some things you need to define.
But, so just to clarify, you know, what we're, we're talking about is just the maintenance portion, so, so what we're, what we're actually funding for these guys is, you know, their, their dry cleaning, are helping with it, I mean, this doesn't even cover it for, for what they will probably spend a year. The, the other portion of it is, is just a plain clothing allowance, and, and that's pretty clear, I mean, it's acceptable business clothing.
Okay, to include but not limited to.
We can do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there, there's some words that, that could satisfy that.
Okay, so what we can do, how about Scott, you good with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so what we can do is make a motion.
So, no.
To pass this and have you two get together and define and clear that language up.
Yes.
Base, we'll, we'll make a motion based on the, on you two get together and clear the language up, and then we'll need a second on that?
Second.
Okay, and is there any further discussion, Rev, you got anything? Okay, all right, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here, Burrows, sound like in a tunnel.
He's in DC.
All right, next is Ms. Turner on the City Engineering.
Yes, thank you. You know, as y'all are well aware, we've been having some discussion about what we can add through the additional funding that's been made available through DEQ on the promenade, and we had brought a number of potential amenities that could be used, we had a discussion, and I guess we're, we're trying to kinda move forward almost on a daily basis at this point, trying to nail those down, figure out exactly what it is we're gonna use, in what priorities, what can be provided in the time amount that we have, what things we can acquire otherwise, and so, basically, we wanted to just kinda bring you an update, tell you what we're thinking about, tell you what we would like to move forward with, see if you have any issues or would like to direct us otherwise, but generally.
Jackie, can you remind us how much fund is?
It's in the neighborhood of $60,000 to $70,000, depending on exactly how everything else resolves out. We do have some very specific restrictions on it, where things can be used, what it can be used for, and it has to be within the scope, and then everything that we agree that we wanna do, we're gonna have to go through Covington and DEQ and get it kinda blessed, and make sure that it does follow the intent of the grant, but consistent, I think, with what we talked about, also with some modifications based on schedule and acquisition process and whatnot, what we're looking at is, number one, putting eight live oak trees.
Oh.
No, you had a question?
No, just heartburn.
Okay.
Over the trees that are gonna be planted and then fall over, but, go ahead.
So, we're looking at putting eight live oaks at the top of the hill, we've looked at what it would take to get them established and make sure that they work long-term.
So you're talking about on the top?
On the top of the hill.
In the sand?
On the top of the hill in the, in the grassed area, on top of the.
On top of the hill?
Yes, to, and the idea.
So I will get.
By the wind is the draw.
What is that, for the shade?
For the shade, yeah.
Okay, so wait, look, my grandson is one and a half, so he'll probably get to enjoy that later on in life.
Somebody will, somebody will. They absolutely will not.
Do you think the wind, what? Oh, I.
Live oaks have a root structure that are incredibly hardy.
I see them laying down all over the point now and, and all down the beach.
Once they get their roots established, once they get their roots established, they're incredibly hardy and they do, I mean, that's why we have live oaks all over, especially the beach area now, is because they have survived storm after storm after storm where other trees don't. But they're in the ground.
Let's plant them in somebody's yard. I love the oaks, don't get me wrong, but on top of that hill.
We've gotta get the roots.
Where a regular 12 mile an hour wind comes up to 80 up top, no, I can't do that, so, I'm a dead no on that, but go ahead, we got others that can vote me down.
I guess with that said, do we have the majority wanting to do that or should we strike that?
I'd like to say, I mean, you gotta think about, about the future, and I know you can't buy.
For the kids.
Okay, well, we'll outvote me.
500 gallon oak tree to plant.
I go down, I call them all the time about fixing the oak trees all over.
And we've had, we've had some issues with that and we'll, we'll have the same kinda requirements on this.
You're gonna, you're gonna bust that encapsulated cap on there when you do that, you realize that? You're gonna drill down in there and that cap is sealed on that big hill, so, you're the engineer, I'm not gonna vote for it, just not. So, you got a yes, a no?
I like the trees.
I'm a no.
Two to two.
I had, I had oak trees in my house.
Okay, so no oak trees.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
We had some gaps with, when we had pine trees removed and whatnot and putting back other trees, and so we've got some gaps where we think everybody is in agreement, we want palm trees along the promenade, and we can certainly put those in with this money here.
I am not gonna oppose palm trees on the beach. I, it's a beach, I, I don't get, trying to put trees on the beach, it's, but I'm, I'm okay, Scott, if we wanna switch to palms.
I mean, it, consistent with what you've seen elsewhere, we're, like on both sides of things.
They don't have a lot of shade, no.
Basically, the areas that you've seen now, there are some that just don't.
Why can't you get a coconut tree or something that's gonna produce something?
What do you think a palm tree is?
Well, it ain't produce, I haven't seen the first palm tree that'll, that'll produce. Ain't nothing producing no coconuts out there, all right, go ahead.
Do we want palm trees on the gaps in the promenade?
Scott, you need us. Well, I'm up in there on that one, I mean, I think we got several down there, but, I mean.
We're talking about adding about four right here, it's just to the gap places that probably should've already had them in there and just got missed when the pine trees came out.
I would be okay with it.
He's okay?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, 'cause you're. I know, I know, you're already a tree lover like that.
I'm good.
Rev's good?
Yes, for the palm trees.
Yes, for the palm trees.
All right, now, another thing that we've been talking about back and forth, and I've got some details for you to look at, is distance signage for runners, all along the promenade, similar to what you've seen along the beach in Gulfport, we wanna put emblems on the concrete and then also put some pedestals at some major intersections, and what we talked about was Pasco Goula Market, Beach Park, and probably like at the Longfellow House where there's specific areas putting pedestals, and what we would do on that is put distance to the next marker, and then in addition to that, on every tenth of a foot, we would put markers down on the concrete. We've got, I've got a couple examples of things that we were thinking about that I'd like for y'all to just kinda look at.
Now, are these just like sealed in the ground?
So here's an example of what we would probably use, we buy these, and I'd like to get these back, we have to actually install them, but just for y'all to kinda feel, these are.
Oh, yeah.
These are things that we put down with some industrial adhesive on concrete and on steel where we have inlets right now.
I don't have them.
We put them down and they're very resilient, so what we're thinking is something similar to that, and then what we're looking at is, those are just some options for markers. My, I like all of the ones that were presented, but my personal preference is the circle just because corners tend to wear a little easier.
And that's $6,000?
To get.
We're not doing the oak trees.
No, I'm looking, it's got, okay, it's got six, I don't know how many it is, but.
What we're talking, it's about 80 of them and what we're talking about is having enough, having enough to put in and have.
You skipped pedestal six?
I'm putting them together, I'm sorry, yes. Pedestal signs, that's a, four to six of them to do the, the structures that stand up.
I apologize for that. Um, okay, so this is. So how often are you doing them, I mean, why wouldn't you do like every quarter of a month?
We talked about actually doing them every tenth, so when you're running, you know exactly how far you've gone, you do any kind of interval training or anything like that, you wanna know exactly how many tenths you've done, so we've talked about doing these every tenth.
Who's the runners out here?
And having replacements.
Walkers, runners.
Okay, so that, you're talking about those or these?
This kind, but with one of those, I mean, this is don't dump into the water, so we're looking at mileage markers like that, so we would get them printed.
He had to kill them.
Okay.
And then we would have backups as, you know, for if some of them wear out, we would get some replacements and go ahead and, and that's what's proposed in the budget is that.
But with the pedestal and that, it's $11,000.
No oak trees, you picked a battle.
No, 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 I didn't pick that, I didn't pick a battle, I picked that battle, and I'm gonna pick this battle, $11,000 on distance markers is not something I can, you know, you gotta cut that, you gotta.
You're not walking.
I'm not walking, I've got a golf cart, I'm supporting the golf cart people, so, I can't walk, I wish I could walk, if I, if my blood, my blood disease would allow me to walk, I'd be a walking fool, but I can't, so, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not dis.
I could do it, but I don't know that I wanna do every tenth of a mile.
Well, you spend $11,000, that's a. Well, you spend eleven thousand dollars, that's too much money to spend on that.
I agree with that.
Well, keep in mind that the number that we put down there for the markers includes replacements, it's not just the first installation, so that's to be able to come back and replace them if they get worn or removed.
Now, let me ask you, on the pedestal, you're talking about, that's four to six pedestals.
We talked about doing four.
Which is the most expensive part of this stuff?
What we looked at is just these pedestals here, they're going to kind of be like the bollards, some kind of probably rectangle pedestal. We're going to have to put a little bit of a foundation in where they're not going to get knocked over. And then the thought was is that on each one of them, for instance, at the end of Market Street, it will say, like, these markers would say mile one point seven, mile one point eight. Market Street might say mile one point seven two. And then it would have Pascagoula Street, point seven miles, Beach Park, point six miles, so that you know exactly how far it is to the next monument.
I'm still not there, but let me ask you this, if you could take out, where are those pedestals going to go? Where?
We're going to have to identify exactly, but we're thinking in that brick section right between the benches?
If you could take out one of those ugly benches and put one of them there, I'd be closer to it. But it's, you know, anything that gets them ugly benches tore up, I'm all for, but.
Cars will do it, I mean, they're there to keep cars off of.
I know that, we could redo, we could hash this out all night, but I, I just don't know if I could do eleven thousand dollars on that.
Just a clarification, this is money that has to be spent on this promenade project, correct?
Correct, with very limited things, if we don't use it, we just give it back, we don't have any other options.
But they want something else, so he's trying to.
No, I don't want nothing else, I got everything, I promise. Now, look, looking at your list, because I haven't seen this list, but looking at your list in all fairness, you know, I.
There's golf cart parking at the bar.
There's golf cart parking, but it's also not, not something that we could probably implement in that timeframe, and we probably, we're not sure if we'd have to go out for bids or not, so.
Well, you could implement more grills at Beach Park or some down at.
Can't go in Beach Park. It can only go to Oliver Street.
Who told me there was grills in Beach Park?
There are some.
But you can't spend money.
We can't spend this money at Beach Park.
No, I meant right there in front of Beach Park, not actually in it. Where the families, well, who was that talking to me about that anyway?
Yeah, this money can't go to the Beach Park.
All right, what about the point?
It can't go past the, like, the entry into the point, there's a line.
I don't know if we want to put grills on the beach. Anyway, I'm getting ahead, let's go back to the pedestal and distant markers. Let's just.
Well, I'm going to agree with you, Mayor, I think we can do better. I mean, I don't mind having some distance markers, but a thousand dollars worth of them seems like a lot of money.
All right, so, Mr. Parker?
I'd like some distant markers, I don't know eleven thousand dollars, but.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have to have them every tenth of a mile, do we?
You can do however you want to, we can do it every quarter if you prefer, we can do it every two tenths, or.
But why is it so expensive, I mean?
It's just the quantity of them, I mean, we're talking about two and a half miles of each, so if you're looking at, you know, twenty-five and then getting three sets of them.
People are going to pry them up and take them for souvenirs.
You've got, I mean, you've got saltwater that's going to get up on them, and, you know, people running past them and whatnot, it's likely that some will.
That's eleven thousand dollars, just be. All right.
I'm not so.
I like them, I'm in.
I'm out, he's out, he's out, he's out, you're in.
No, he's not out, he's in and he's in.
I'm in for a certain number, but.
Well, I was going to say, on this, on this number, that's what we're looking at, on this number. So, what we need to do is go back and dial it down, trim it up.
And how do you want to dial it down, do you want to do less often, or only one set, or?
No, not, definitely not one set, because we're going to need backup, so just not as, not as often.
Not as often, we'd trim that down, yeah.
Do we like quarter mile, or two tenths, or how do you, what would y'all prefer?
I like quarter mile.
Quarter mile, I'll go with quarter mile. Rev, that knocks a chunk of pound off there. Rev's good, Comer's good.
Do we like the pedestals added, so that when you come down to the end of the street, you can see that? Because that'll be the only thing that'll stick up in the air where you're coming down, like if you're driving or riding a golf court down the street.
You're going to need to know on your golf cart how long, how far you've driven, is that what you're saying?
It's the thing that'll catch your attention and let you know the mile markers are there.
I'm just kidding.
I don't care for pedestals.
I don't care for the pedestals.
No?
I don't, well, you're saying you don't care if the pedestals?
No, I don't care for them.
I don't care for the pedestals either, so, that's two, Parker?
I don't have to have the pedestals.
I don't have to have the pedestals.
All right, you're out of the pedestals.
All right, next item on the list is pet waste stations, which is something that, you know, we added the wooden water fountain that does have a dog drink bowl at the bottom of it. And just so anybody who's listening will know, if you go to that and try to drink out of it or put water for your dog, please try to flush it for a while, because it is on a dead end line, and if it's sitting there, you're likely going to get some warm water, some odor, let it flush, and it'll get some clean water there, but. So we've added that, and we were thinking, especially considering the fact that we're wanting to expand the area that pets can get out on the beach, we were looking at adding some pet waste stations, which are basically the things that look kind of like showers, but have the doggy poo bags there, and let you pick them up and get them into a garbage can.
Well, I'm for that, because my dog uses it, and I see other people's use it, and I'd love to see more of those, because there's a lot of distance that you have to walk, or that, Don, I ride the golf cart, but, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
We all like that one?
So we got, you got, all right, so that's good.
All right, so we also talked about adding some outdoor grills at the point end. We can't do it actually into the point side, but over on the promenade side of the hill, we could add a couple grills over there for outdoor activities.
Well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Mayor.
Well, I don't, I'm not a fan of outdoor grills right out there. If we're going to put anything, why don't we selectively put burn pits where they could have like a little fire out on the beach or whatever?
We had some very aggressive.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm asking.
Yeah, we had some very aggressive people who live along through there who do not want to see fires along the stretch of the beach with wind blowing up towards their houses.
That's probably true.
Which is why we concentrated them where they are at the beach park.
All right, so where all do we have the outdoor grills now?
At Beach Park, I think, we don't have anything at the point.
But we can't spend this money on that.
Right, but we can add some at the point end on the promenade side, around where the amphitheater is, like off the side of the sidewalk or something. We've got picnic tables under a shade structure out there, so we were thinking it would be nice if they had some grills off to the side they can cook and bring their food in on the picnic table.
Question I have, who's going to be responsible for the upkeep on those outdoor grills? Because the one at Beach Park are disgusting.
Maybe we.
Probably be very similar, people who use them should be cleaning up after themselves, and then it would be a matter of.
So if they don't, who's responsible?
We ultimately responsible for all of it.
So if they don't get cleaned, they're not going to be used, so that's a waste.
All right.
Is that correct?
It's, that's, I mean, that's true, so if people aren't cleaning up after themselves, it's, you know, lack of pride in our community, and that's what's something we got to deal with.
It's terrible out there, I bring my own when I cook. All right, outdoor grills, I'm not for it, anybody else? You for it? I said the outdoor grills on the beach, are you for it?
I kind of agree with the Rev.
All right, so you got a no, 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 all right, outdoor grills are out.
Okay, so at the last discussion, we brought up some outdoor recreational things, Ms. Comer brought up, and we looked at a number of them, the beanbag toss cornhole.
Thank you.
Facility thingies, the little sloped things, they make those in some heavy-duty concrete where it's nearly impossible to move them, and then we looked at doing some kind of anchor foundation where they would be basically impossible without equipment. And what we suggested here, we looked at bocce ball, we looked at shuffleboard, ping pong, that kind of thing. They do have some facilities for that, and then we also looked at the waste receptacles that we looked at. And Mr. Quarter has been in touch with Ingles to see if they could maybe help to manufacture some of those, because those are not just like bought, they're actually built. And so with that in mind, that itself didn't lend itself to this money in this process, but we're still pursuing it. And then we thought about things like ping pong tables, and the fact that you would actually need to get ping pong balls and paddles, and it would be better if we looked long-term at some other kind of funding to put them at Beach Park where there's people there with the concession stands that could help. So what we liked, because you can bring your own beanbags to the point area, is potentially putting in two sets of the cornhole, one with the flagship logo, the Pascagoula flagship logo, and then one with the lighthouse seal. So you could play on the lighthouse, you could play on the flagship, we would have two sets kind of set off to the side. And we're guessing with foundations, the two full systems would be in the neighborhood of five thousand.
I, I mean, I don't have.
Well, my only concern was, would they actually get used if the beanbags weren't out there, you know?
Now, I was noticing just this weekend, because I was shopping for a birthday present, actually, that they, they're for sale, little bags with the four or six beanbags in them, and you just tote your own with you.
I mean, it really is, but.
So if you brought yours with you to the, to the game?
The bags right there handy, I mean, I just don't know that they would get used.
What type of material those beanbags made out of?
I assume they're some kind of canvas.
A canvas type that sewed together.
I was just thinking about the venable. On those beanbags, some, about it, it takes their anger or frustration out on the beanbag.
But we would not be providing the beanbags, we would be providing just the slopes with the holes in them.
Um, yeah. Where would these go?
Again, down by the walking area on the promenade side of the point hill. We just find some spots that they fit in.
I don't, I don't, I, I'm not a fan, but I mean.
I mean, I'd love for something to be down there for them to do, but I just, you know, they get down there and they see them, and they, you know, second thought, go buy some beanbags and go back, I don't see that.
I mean, I think what I'm thinking is that if you know they're there, you kind of keep some in the car, and you start making it a regular visit just to get out in the sunshine, I mean, maybe not the first visit, but you start coming back to it.
I think it'll be used as a park bench, they'll sit on it. I don't know, I'm, you know. Where are you at? We're just going to go down.
I'd like to see that bottom item right there, that landscape screening for the breakwater or the concrete and stuff. Tell us about that.
All right, so that one, our thought is that between the sidewalk area on the south of the hill and where all the riprap rock concrete is, there's a strip of grass in there. And we talked about putting some of the thick seagrasses that tend to scratch your legs, that will be discouraging to kids climbing out there, but not something structural that we'd have to maintain, and that might actually be an invitation, you know, one more challenge to get across the fence. But we'd put, the proposal here is to put about forty plants, let them grow and fill in. They're very low maintenance, should survive well in that area, and would be a deterrent to people climbing out on the rocks.
I get why it's there, but when you're riding through there and everything's nice and clean and stuff now, and your eyes get straight to the old concrete right there, so I would, I would be that, for that a hundred percent.
Actually, you know, I get a calls all the time about the grass that's grown up, we need to keep that clean, cut, clean cut. You've done it a couple of times, but people pull up there and they want to see the water.
Right, this is not, this is not in front of the water, this is behind the hill.
I know that, people want to get, pull up here and see the water. And that's just part of it with that whole riprap thing, I wanted to build a bulkhead with some of the funding we got, but we'll see where that goes, but I'm, I'm like you, if they, you put something in there, I wouldn't have a problem with that, as long as we maintain it.
Good with that one?
Yeah.
All right, so the one that we skipped over is a monument sign, and the concern I have there, you see off on the side, is that we've had some real issues trying to get anybody who would provide a rendering and/or quote of something after being told exactly what we wanted, we're trying to pursue that, we've got a couple companies we're looking at, and the potential of about ten weeks to complete it. And we need to spend this money, bill for it, and submit it for reimbursement in that same ten-week time period. So we're getting a little tight there. You see below it, shade structure at the amphitheater is something we considered, but that to provide is about a sixteen-week lead time. And then the golf cart parking spaces, we could probably do something at the north end just inside the point, and the estimate there is about five thousand. So those are the other three items that we kind of had on the list.
So instead of planting oak trees on that hill, why don't we just put some kind of screen structure like that, so that you have the pillars there, but you can take the screen down, or replace the screen, if something happened?
We could, it's that same kind of sixteen-week lead time to get materials out there, and I don't know that we could do it in the, have it incomplete and billed by April.
I like the monument signage, I like any of that signage that directs people in this real pretty coastal.
Yeah, and the thought behind that was actually a two pieces, is to do something right at the entrance of the point that would help with especially folks who are not from here, who want to see, you know, the point park, welcome to the point. You've got parking, you've got restrooms, you know, kind of, here's what we have. And then the idea was with future funding, potentially maybe tidlin's, is going out to the actual end of the point where we have that circle, and putting something larger, and both of them, we were thinking flagpole, ship's mast type look, but something larger out at the point, that would be a really good photograph opportunity for people who are visiting to get out there, take a picture you cannot get anywhere else in the world with ship building right behind it, water behind it, and at the point. So, that's the thought there, is kind of a two-part thing, and we're trying to get the one at the entrance with this funding.
Mayor, Council, I realize and I appreciate the notion of adding monuments, I think there's a lot to be said in terms of the history of our city going back many hundreds of years. And I thought a lot about business and industry supporting that, I respect the Chinatown, there are a number of community organizations that have already done similar monuments. There may be some which have not, and so I, I, I would steer the focus not only to business and industry, but to those organizations which have not already participated in some of the monuments that exist on Long Beach Boulevard. So, I just wanted to throw that in.
Do you have a rendering or some kind of, something on this monument?
Unfortunately, we don't, we've kind of done a couple hand sketches and tried to get some sign companies to provide renderings, and they've not responded, and that's one of the issues that we're having. We're trying to get somebody who understands what we're asking for, put back a rendering and a price with it, and we're working that on a daily basis right now. So when we get something, we could certainly provide it.
Yeah, let's, I mean, unless you guys just, I don't.
If nobody's opposed, we'd like to still pursue it.
I don't know that we're opposed, but I'd like to know more about what we're buying here.
Sure, sure, and before we do, we bring that to you.
You know, I don't, is anybody here?
So when does the money have to be spent?
It has to be completely spent and reimbursed by the end of April, I believe.
Are we doing one company?
Numerous.
This is the only surprise you have?
This is, this is an estimate based on communication with several companies.
It's the only estimate.
It's an estimate coming from, BMA is doing this on a volunteer basis, and so they've talked to several companies, and this is their estimate of what it will cost once they get votes from companies.
All right. So, let's go, if everybody's okay, let's find out a little bit more about that before we.
Continue pursuing it and bring it back?
Bring it back.
Sure.
Everybody good with that? All right.
Some of you folks listening out here, call in with some ideas, because I mean, if we got forty-eight thousand dollars left to spend, I'd hate to leave it on the table if it's.
So the other, the other things that are kind of in our mindset that really, we didn't put on the list specifically, because like, like you said, with, we're looking at forty, thirty-five thousand, including the sign, if we're able to implement it with the list that you want to pursue, so we still have another twenty-five to thirty thousand probably that we'll give back if we don't use for eligible items. We're looking at more banners for the light poles, so that they can rotate out during the season and have replacement, and then also just doing a systematic check from one end to the other of parts and items that are likely to need maintenance or replacement, and try to get some replacement parts for things like banner arms, light fixtures, you know, various things that we're going to need to replace just due to maintenance, and try to do a little bit of stock on that.
No, the, I like the flags on the, on the poles. Now, this, it can't be spent on the north side there of Beach Boulevard, just on the south side? Did I understand that correctly?
Technically, it's like the north side of the right-of-way, and then we look just where we did the water connection, so there's that one little spot, but it's basically on the north side, the north edge of the right-of-way of Beach Boulevard.
Because see, you and I've had this discussion a number of times about the east end of Beach Boulevard, where people park all over that, and it's just a terrible sight. You've got such a beautiful beach, and then you've got that big mud pit.
We can't, we can't go east of the, we can't get to the beach park or east with this money anyway, so even if we could go north, we can't go that far east with this.
I'm trying, y'all, I'm just trying. Man, I'm trying, y'all, I'm just trying.
And, you know, unfortunately, this is, this is the frustration with just about every funding source we get, we want to do other things with it, but we have limitations.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get you there.
Yeah.
Uh, so, let me ask you one more thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I see people on the beach running all the time, I see them working out, I see them right there at the uh, bridge right by Beach Park, they're on the rails, and they're doing their setups and stretches, and they're down there doing pushups, is there, can we put any kinda like, equipment that they could use that's reasonable riding, in any of that area, where, like, if they wanted to stop and do pullups, or pushups, or-
Yeah.
Stretching, or anything like that, is-
So, I can see a couple issues, we can certainly look into it and see if we can find something that overcomes the issue, but that's, that's how my mind works, is what challenges would we have, um, first, the uh, county maintains the beach, and they've made it very clear that they don't want anything that's gonna get in the way of their equipment, so if we could find something that doesn't hinder that, we might be able to, um, secondly, of course, there's always an issue with anything metal in front of the saltwater, um, again, we could, I'm sure we could find something that's more resilient, powder coated, that kinda thing, um, and then the other thing that jumps to mind is the amount of resistance we got from the residents in trying to congregate people on that new beach, and whether or not that would uh, revive itself.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question about-
Sure.
Okay, the historical society donated markers on the beach, designated various historical items, I know at least one of them has been destroyed by a vehicle, another one is in the wrong place, which has been pointed out, but it hasn't been moved, and then FEMA and the city, and the Mississippi Department of Art and History, signed an agreement back about six or seven years ago, where FEMA furnished historical markers to designate the house that was on the national register, there were on Beach Boulevard that were destroyed, and those are in the city possession, and I wonder if maybe some of these funds could be used to replace the damaged markers, and to put up the other markers that the city agreed to do under prior administrations.
If we could facilitate that, we could do every, that west of Beach Park, any that fit west of there.
Well, all the houses are west of Beach Park with one exception, and that was the sign that's what they put, kinda like in the flower bed on the corner of Beach Drive and Beach Boulevard.
Okay, where are the markers, I didn't know anything about this.
Well, Jackie, it's near your weapon.
Yeah, let me, let me, I'm talking, I, I'll get, we'll, I agree, I wanna know where they are.
I'm not a hundred percent sure that we've put our hands on them again.
Okay, now, Ms. Ford.
Okay, well, we dug out in the city minutes of that, where, you know, the city in the minutes, had agreed that these would go off, and it was part of FEMA's 106, where they could do some things they shouldn't have done, and the MDAH came back, and they do these markers, and the city has signed off to them, and they've been restored, that was-
If, if we can find them and find a way to install them, I think that would likely be eligible.
Okay, so, here's what I would like, and the council can agree or disagree, but just, I need to hear y'all, I, I want, uh, I, I'd certainly wanna know where those markers are, number one, so, we need to find those markers, Frank, um, I don't care high or low, we need to put our hands on those, and second, if those markers can be put up with this funding, and then that other one replaced, I think that would be a great idea.
We'll give it a shot.
Alright.
Jackie, one other thing came to mind, I was on the rec commission when they first started putting in the beach, the new beach area, uh, there was, and I can't remember who it was, but they came to us because they were tearing all the old piers down and everything, and they were concerned about the pelicans not having a place to land, and they ended up actually saving like two or three uh, pylons, basically, and you still go and you still see the pelican, and then yesterday, I was walking or riding by there, and noticed that the pelicans are landing on a riprap, is there some kinda T-type thing that we could do for the, for the, pretty inexpensive for the birds and pelican, I mean, that's just me, it may be just me, but I always enjoyed seeing the pelican down by the beach, so.
They are all over my house all of a sudden, for like, they're all in the bag, I don't know where the-
But I mean, if you could do something like that, that's pretty reasonable, and it could be down by the riprap, where it wouldn't interfere with the equipment, I would be-
We'll look, we'll definitely look into that, and like the monument sign, bring it back to you, if we come up with something we think will work, we can bring it back to you.
You know the pads where you walk down and get into the water, I, I get asked, I don't know, how many times, what are those pads? Nobody really knows what they're for.
So, if you look across, if you look along the beach, there's a number of big uh, metal poles that stick up without signs or anything on them, those are markers of where the geotube is, and so you're not allowed to use any kind of equipment, or dig, or, or anything south of that, because south of that is where the, is, is kinda like a giant tube sock that was put in underneath the beach, was pumped full of sand, very dense um, structure that is hidden at this point, and then they put the sand in between the road and that geotube, so during the time of that installation, there was a lot of negotiation back and forth between the corps, who was doing the project, and the council at the time, about wanting to provide some access to the water for residents, and um, the only options for breakwaters were things like the riprap that got put out there, or they had some structural prism type things, and none of those would provide access, whether by kayak or on foot, to the water, and there was a, a strong interest by the council at the time to provide some access, so those were negotiated as an access point for residents, and the reason that they come up over there is because in order to get there, to provide any equipment for maintenance where they broke the breakwater, um, they needed something that would allow the equipment to get up over the top, so those are um, matriculated domes is what they called them, and they're specifically there so that we can bring equipment over the top, maintain the riprap and access point for maintenance.
Well, when you talk about that signage, how about maybe putting one out there that says beach entrance? So, people don't know, I didn't know for a long time.
Try to walk on one of those, that could kill you, so.
Yeah. I, 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 I mean, I-
Maybe we should put it out there.
Huh?
Maybe we shouldn't put that sign out there.
Yeah, maybe not.
They get really slick.
Sounds like a-
But, I mean, that's what they were put there for, is so that if we were gonna break the riprap or, or prism dome breakwater-
Yeah.
It needed access for equipment maintenance.
Okay, alright.
So, any other ideas, or just try to do within that framework as much as we can?